Yeah, I was gonna, I'll hand them out though.
All right, welcome all to the April 11th Planning Board meeting. As always, the first thing on our agenda is to approve the 80 minutes from March 21st. Basically, we paid two invoices and corrected an extension resolution misnumbering on our part. We also discussed the white subdivision roadway surface and the planning board's wetland application review procedure, should we get that responsibility from the town board. Do anyone see anything wrong with these minutes or have any questions? Nope. So I make a resolution to pass the March 21st Planning Board minutes.
I will second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Correspondence, we had a very, very light round this month. Basically Karen Hoag asking for an extension on SH29 Westneck LLC and one cryptic request from Julie Lane about a possible Sollevia subdivision approval. I think they may, the reporter may have been thinking of another town or something when they asked me about this. We have, we have one bill to pay for EHA. It totals $506.25 for the month of March. And I had to deal with correspondence with the board and myself regarding resolutions and the wetlands code because I asked both Beth and Joe to chime in and for attending a meeting. 1.8 hours, I think as always, very valuable. So I make a motion to accept the EHA invoice for $506.25.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Awesome. We have now for 35 SH29 Westneck LLC, another extension request. They are trying to get their deeds in order and they have an upcoming meeting with the Health Department for seeing, for their wastewater credits and to get that official. So they have asked for another extension. This was, I believe, a 45-day extension that will take them to June 1st. Any questions about this application?
No, it seemed reasonable.
Okay, so I make a motion to accept Resolution 12 of 2023.
That's good, okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's the end of our business meeting. Current applications, the Bloom Minor Subdivision, they're still at the Health Department we're with and they have until July 10th currently to submit a final application. The Robert Subdivision, we're still waiting for information from Matt Sherman. He is trying to get through the Health Department before getting into the cycle of having the request extensions. Makes sense. And we just extended SH29 Westneck LLC. One thing I did last week, so I put together a flow chart. This is to, this was at the suggestion of Jim Colligan at the Town Board Works. I guess it was an actual public hearing to discuss the differences in the current town board funded wetlands application review process and what our planning board would, process would be. So I'm gonna go through this and I'm gonna add a little bit of color to, to this land chart. An applicant submits a drawing to the building department, basically a schematic version and the building department reuses it and issues a letter of denial. With that letter of denial, the applicant is allowed to submit an actual application to the town clerk. So the application now, the way it works currently is submits an application to the town clerk who then forwards it to the building department clerk, who then folds it, forwards it to the building inspector to review if the application is complete. If it's deemed complete, the building inspector will write a letter and sends that to, issues that to the town clerk who then distributes the wetland, copies of the wetlands applications to the town board, the CAC, and the planning board. The CAC does their site visits and drafts a memo. The planning board does our site visits and drafts a memo. Both, both the whole CAC and the whole planning board discuss it individually and everyone's content with the memo submitted back to the town clerk for distribution to the town board. Then the town board submits a public hearing. The town then discusses the application typically at a work session. The town attorney drafts a resolution, the town board adopts that resolution. Then the town clerk will go and issue a wetlands permit and that gets distributed to the building department clerk and put in the file and then a copy of that gets also submitted with the applicant submits when they go for their building permit. So a lot of people are involved with that multiple times. I'm not trying to start any problems by saying that the building inspector who issues the denial letters reviewing the application for completion. I don't necessarily think that's a wrong item. Just in the past, when the building inspector was on the planning board, we determined that he couldn't write a denial letter and then review an application. So, but on the planning board, he's making a final judgment at the building department level. He's just deeming whether the application is complete. So maybe that's okay, maybe it's borderline, I don't know. So the proposed planning board process would be greatly simplified in my mind. Submission again to the, of an application to the building department. Building department clerk gives it to the building inspector. The inspector issues a letter of denial, which allows the applicant to submit an application. Now the application gets submitted directly to the planning board clerk who distributes it to the planning board engineer for completion determination. And if it's complete, then the planning board clerk distributes it to the CAC and to the planning board members. As the CAC did their reviews before, they visit the site, they draft a memo, they talk about it and then issue the memo. Planning board members would visit the site and prepare preliminary comments and then we would hold a public hearing. And at the public hearing, we would discuss our comments and and the applicants and whoever else interested party. Close the public hearing and then we could discuss it afterwards amongst ourselves further or at the following meeting. The planning board attorney would draft the resolution. We would adopt the resolution and then the planning board clerk would issue the permit to the applicant, sending a copy to the building department clerk. So in my mind, there is a lot of back and forth that is omitted and would be a little bit of a more streamlined process. On top of that, when the project is done, the planning boards or towns' environmentalists would go to the site to verify that the plantings and the buffer promised in the initial application was installed per, per the original spec. Currently, the building inspector would go to the site and the building departments, I mentioned numerous times, they don't understand planting materials and so they, you know, they feel it's almost unfair for them to have to make that judgment. And so I think by us handling it, the planning board handling it adds protections with this, this other step that we would be bringing to the code currently. There was discussions about this being more expensive. And last meeting when we discussed it, we, I just brought up to everyone here their Beth's and Joe's suggested involvements and trying to understand the scope. I've since talked to Joe and he's more comfortable, he's comfortable with any kind of proposal we, involvement we use him. And I think what we're just gonna do is have them, him deem the application, whether the application's complete or not and write us a simple memo which outlines any application deficiencies. If there's something that we can make a judgment call on whether it's needed or not, we do have, would have that flexibility. And then outline of zoning and of the wetlands code and specific issues. So we have a base report upon to make our response, our review. Currently, we would do that all ourselves in-house and in some applications, it gets done a little better than in other applications. So this would add some consistency and some actual proof. And he was saying it would probably be an hour and a half, two hours for him. And Beth Baldwin said, wow. So for her, and with the addition that they're hiring an intern, so maybe the intern would be drafting these and, and Beth would just be reviewing for us for cost savings. So it's not, it's not the, the big numbers that were thrown out at the town board work session that weren't based on the actual scope. So I just thought this flow chart was, it was a good suggestion on Jim's part and helpful.
I was gonna ask, is it possible to put it up? Can Susan put it up? Because I was just thinking, if you're not here, it's, it's great when you're looking at it, it's such a great.
Well, we can certainly put it on the.
She's put it on the website.
Yeah, I put it on the website.
Yeah, it's just, it's great, I like it, but as you were speaking, it's a lot easier to look at it.
And we're reminded by Christina to make sure the whole town, not missing part in the town.
Right, right.
There's a lot of back and forth between departments and.
This is great, I mean, it's.
Yeah, this is very clear, I like this.
I had some questions.
Sure.
So I was just looking at kind of like in the, in the Delta changes. Right now, the town clerk holds a lot of this material information. Is that at all important for it to maintain and be held? Because I know that's like for just from a, for foil stuff or other things, like do you need to have, get held by the town clerk? Or is it okay if it's held by?
No, it can be held by the planning board clerk. So for example, the zoning board, the ZBA, they.
That was my next question.
And they keep their own records. So in that case, it shouldn't be an issue and there'll also be record at the building department as well.
And that was actually my other question was, I would think this is more similar to what the way the ZBA is being run right now. And I thought we might as well can make sure that we're really paralleling them because if it's more, if it's more like that, then that makes more sense. Because it's like you say, it's a B A offer, it's like this and we operate kind of the same way.
If there's anything extra, then I think that'd be good. And the last thing I had, oh, on the planning board environmentalist signing off, like how do they get? Right now, it goes to the planning, the building department and they kind of take care of it all within themselves? So that they're left with some way for them to notify, for some way for them to know when for the environmentalists.
So our environmental and reviewer would write a memo as part of his review.
The question is, when does he know when to go do the review? In other words, what, what triggers, right now, the building department gets triggered because they're.
They're asking for a CO.
They're asking for a CO.
So then they ask for a CO, well, did you get your environmental?
So the building department have to do that in that check and then notify.
Push it back and say, you have, you have to contact the.
I wanted to make sure we had the right triggers in place.
Well, would that be in the application form now? Would we be adjusting that to say, you know, like a checklist, like when you get to?
Yeah, I think we'll have to tweak that a little bit.
And would the environmentalist be necessary in every case?
I don't think so, I think.
So I would say like if necessary, you know.
Yeah, I think exactly, I think only on cases where a buffer is developed and, and specific plantings are.
So we would, we would put that specifically in the resolution, basically.
Yes, yes.
It makes sense.
Exactly.
That, I think that, that.
The one thing I, sorry. One thing I didn't put into the flow chart is the intermediary steps by the various clerks. I just said it goes to the town clerk and then to the building inspector. I don't, you know, so it really goes town clerk to building department clerk and then to the building inspector. And there's a lot of this, these intermediate steps that it's not even in this flow chart.
Right, and you know, part of the problem with that is it's like a game of telephone. When you pass something around the room so many times, things get lost, pieces fall out of the rubber band, you know? And if you have so many people reviewing the application, you know, you may not get the same application from beginning to end because, you know, you may have this middle step where the building department's like, hey, you're missing this. And they add it to the application. It's not necessarily what the town clerk had in the beginning, but now it's what the CAC is seeing and then it's what the planning board is seeing and the town board. But then maybe the CAC requests something on their own volition and now we even have a different application than you saw because now there's additional information. So I think that transferring this to the planning board would streamline that process and reduce the risk of having the application changed during the review process and having it be missed. And all of a sudden, three groups are reviewing three separate, like slightly different applications. This kind of cleans that up and reduces the risk of error.
Yeah, I think it's good, yeah, I think that having a single place where there's a point of, here's the truth.
Correct.
Being maintained by the, by the, a really neat way is to be the planning board clerk.
Right.
Being the owner of that. So basically, if the CAC asks for something, then we all get it.
We all go through the planning board clerk and they would have like the master document.
Now, what about cost? And wouldn't this cost more because right now Kylie's doing it and he's a salaried employee? But then we'd have to have Beth do it and she charges by the hour and the same with Joe and the environmentalist.
So Joe and Beth are already generally at our meetings when there's stuff going. Tonight, they're not here again because we tried to maintain efficiency here and not just, and burn town dollars.
Right.
But if they are here, then they're already participating in at least part of it. They, we do have to pay their independent analysis and review and the drafting of the document. Currently, there is no, no Joe in the, in the process, even at the town level because, you know, Joe Finare doesn't review it. The building department reviews it. So they're, they're paying in a way, the building department a little bit less to do this because we're doing it. It's taking up less of the building department's time and we're doing it instead. So there are some, some trade-offs here.
And that senses the saving in time and resources of the other town departments because, you know, in this case, the building department has handled this application multiple times. Once for the denial letter and then one for completeness and then once again for the issuance of the wetlands permit and then once again for the, so I mean, it saves time and that, we don't have four or five clerks now handling the same application. It's going to one place. So now you're cutting out those three or four clerks from taking their time to move this application through the process. So, you know, in the end, it saves kind of time and money because it's like more efficient.
The wetland application has been pinned at $250 for a long, long time. So I, I think there would be some recommendation to increase that. And maybe it's, maybe it's a $500 application. I know the ZBA fees are quite, depending on which, I think the minimum's 375. They have their own, they pay Kylie separately for his services. And then there are other applications if you have, that allows you two variances. But if you need relief from three or four, then you're paying significantly more again. And I had one application which we needed like 11 points of, of relief and I had to turn around and ask for a petition for relief from the fee. So we do have flexibility if an applicant really thinks this is very difficult and, you know, we can, they can petition us and we can make judgment calls on, on those numbers too.
Yeah, and I think as you do review, you'll kind of get an idea of how much.
How its cost is, yeah. And then let the board know and the board, is that why they want to increase the fee? That seems reasonable.
There should be different tiers of cost depending on the complexity of the situation, I think. Like something simple like a bocce is very simple, whereas something like, you know, the Pridwin or, you know, would need.
Well, we certainly can talk about that and, and I think we do best working through some of these to see what they actually cost us. As David just said.
Yeah.
Commercial properties are going to be completely different than residential. And the commercial would potentially fall under site plan review. And then as part of that site plan review process, get forwarded to us for the wetland review. And that would still have to be worked out with the town board.
Yeah, depending on the extent of what they're doing or, you know, yeah.
There was some point brought up about various applications that are big that are both going to the town board for, say, excessive size and wetlands. And how by pushing the wetlands to us, we'd slow down the process. And I really, again, find that's a really bizarre concept. They are two separate applications, they are supposed to be reviewed separately. The town board actually combines their public hearing, but they're still really two applications, you know? And so if, if the oversized house, the special permit, goes through this traditional town board process, it is again, using all those clerks and all, all, all the other, you know, time things where, where the wetlands application coming through us would be probably completed before the, way before the special permit.
Which would really be beneficial to the town board to have your wetlands determination prior to us giving the special permit. Because then you can take that into account when you review the whole application.
Right.
So, you know, in my mind, that's not necessarily valid.
So I do know, I do think one thing we look at very closely on some of these larger homes is the impact on wetlands. Because, so if we don't know in doing the wetlands, if that's gonna be approved or not, that could potentially change the wetlands approval. So there is a bit of a chicken and egg problem.
Well, not necessarily, I mean, you guys can do, you know, let's say you approve wetlands, we deny the special permit. The homeowner has to go back to the drawing board anyway. So they're gonna have to reapply with whatever their new design is. And they would have to reapply for the wetlands because it's gonna be a new project, a new design. They'd have to reapply for the special permit if they still stay in that category of requiring a special permit.
Unless say it's, it's less invasive than what we've granted them. Then I don't think they would have to go through the entire process. They've been granted one level of spurs, as long as it can be analyzed and.
Right, so they can apply for a modified modification.
They've come to us for a modification and then a modification.
That's, okay. I just want to make sure we don't end up by, we've optimized locally and then it makes the actual overall thing more complicated to go through multiple iterations on either side.
Yeah, but I do think, I think that argument just that I heard didn't, doesn't hold water at all. And, and it just, I wanted the opportunity to say something about it.
Seems like one of those things, you don't know how it's gonna work until you actually do it.
Yeah, you will learn.
I think you're right. So then, the only other thing I wanted to briefly talk about is the if we get the review already. And then the timeline for all these applications that they're waiting already.
Yep.
And I'm sure there's more still coming in that we haven't heard about. The town board's gonna discuss it, they've closed the public hearing as of, even written comments as of today.
Right.
So they're gonna discuss it at their next work session amongst themselves. If they decide to go ahead, I would presume they voted in on the 25th. Then it takes approximately two weeks to be filed and recorded with the Secretary of State. So we don't have any ability to start on that before that happens. We could possibly, on the 9th of May, our next meeting, which is two weeks after the 25th, schedule public hearings for all the applications we know of. I know the CAC has been reviewing these applications and that are in front of them, as they traditionally do. We've just been on hold because we don't know how we're yet feeling it.
Changes us versus doesn't change them.
So if the public hearing, if we can schedule on the 9th and with the understanding that we're not infringing on the CAC's 45 days, then we could set up a special meeting instead of waiting until our June, four weeks until our June 13th meeting. And so we have to, I'm not quite sure the special, I've heard special meeting, I heard you have to 10 days or something? And you just have to send a letter to the reporter, notice to the.
They have to notice it, yeah, I'm not sure exactly what the timeline is. We have to find out, but it might, I think it's 10 days.
And you just have to send it to the reporter and they don't necessarily, we don't necessarily publish it? We just notify them of it? It's something along that line.
I think it has to be published.
It has to be, I think it has to be published because if it's a special meeting and a public hearing, you know, it has to be noticed, so it would have to be in the reporter, under our legal notices.
Yeah, on the 11th probably.
Yeah, so we can figure out the exact timeline for that to make sure you guys have it and because if you decide you're gonna start doing, like if you wanna do, you know, two meetings a month to try to.
Catch up.
Complete these applications and catch up, you can schedule meetings. We'll just figure out exactly how.
Yeah, so I'm just, I was thought, you know, and unfortunately Beth's not here to advise me on, us on this, so.
It seems like.
It's like the last two days.
So 9th of May and then, and two, say, two weeks later, have a special, that's 14 days.
It might be two and a half weeks, you can see it's published on the 11th, which is when the paper comes out and that's two weeks after that, something like that.
About two weeks. Then we have to submit by a certain date and X month and they only publish on a certain date.
Sunday, 11th.
It's extended out.
Yeah, so if we set the public hearings on the 9th and decide to have a special hearing, we could on the 10th send in our notice to the reporter. That would be on a Wednesday for the Thursday if that works.
I don't think they can do.
It has to be, it has to be the, the Monday or Tuesday.
Monday or Tuesday.
Yeah, Monday, Tuesday, in order to get it in.
That's when they take it, yeah.
Tuesday's the extended, that's.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
But can, can we do that knowing that we don't have a decision? We, we think maybe a decision.
Well, we'll know, we'll know on the 25th or maybe have a better feeling on the 18th if you're going ahead with it on the 25th. And then we'll, we'll know to set up the public hearings on the 9th.
And you're saying it also doesn't encroach on CAC because they've already started to review them?
I don't think it encroaches on their 45 days because they've, I keep hearing tidbits that they've been reviewing.
They, I believe they did Mechanic Park Day, but they did not do 169 Ram Island or 7 Chequid because those two were not posted on the website, so they couldn't discuss them.
Oh, right, right.
Okay, so we could jump ahead on two.
Yeah.
Yeah, just took it.
And then, so that means we could then possibly even with these people, McCain's been waiting, you know, submitted their application in, they submit their application in September. And, you know, this messes up any, anyone's ability to wait for a determination before you tell your design professionals to go into a full construction documents. And so I'm sure they'll be struggling with the September start and the same with.
Now we got safety issues at 169, you know?
Yep, I don't, I don't know where that stands. I think the town board's been reviewing 169, right? Ramon Drive?
For wetlands, yeah, we're reviewing it.
I thought you, you started a review on it and then it was. It's, and then it's a wetlands and a large house.
Yeah.
It's one of those doubles.
I don't think so, that's not, that's not, no, it's not a large house, it's like 4,600, it's not, it's not big.
Okay, I'm confusing it with.
149.
Yeah, with 149.
Oh, 149, yeah, that's different, right.
Actually, that confusion. Actually, I confused it.
That's the old Spiegel band.
Yeah, okay, all right, we'll, we'll figure it out.
But I think, I like the idea of the goal being to try to get some going before the end of May versus waiting until June. I think that's, I think that's the right way of thinking about it, and let's just see what we can do to.
Yeah, so we started on nine May and didn't have a public hearing until thirteen June, and then didn't vote on anything until eleven July. That just, I want it's intent to follow a off-season schedule.
It, it seems, given what we're doing, I'm certainly willing, as I said, back to everybody else on the board is willing to do some extra meetings to be able to make sure we get through it.
Right.
Yeah. Works for me.
Okay, that's all I have, any, anyone on the board have anything?
We were at the Town Board meeting last week, and we were both.
Yeah.
You made some nice comments.
Stella, do you have anything for us tonight?
Hi, everyone, yeah, thanks for asking, Ian. In your flowchart, is there a difference in what happens if somebody doesn't agree with the way that the vote goes? So if the Planning Board assumes responsibility for these applications, is, is, is it an Article seventy-eight that they would have to file if they didn't agree? Can they appeal to the Town Board? And similarly with the, with it now with the Town Board, if they don't like what the Town Board does, is it an Article seventy-eight or something different?
I, I would have to, and I wish Beth here was, to confirm what I'm saying, but I would presume in both situations, it would be an Article seventy-eight.
I think so, I presume so.
Okay, so whatever the outcome is, Ian, I mean, I would just recommend potentially putting that in to your flowchart so people can understand that that's not necessarily going to be a difference if there's a change in who makes the decisions on the wetlands applications.
That's a nice suggestion, thank you, Stella.
Thanks very much, guys.
I see Laurie Veredraman's on, Laurie, do you have anything for us?
Uh, no, thank you.
Jerry Siller's on, Jerry, do you have anything for us? Just observing, okay.
It's not mutant.
All right, well, that's again all I have. I make a motion to end our April eleventh end board meeting, on favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good night.
Night.
Yeah, that really helps me stay on a lot more.
I don't know if Christina had embellished that a little for you.
That was very helpful for me.
Are we done with the recording?
Thank you, Ben.
Awesome.
So.